So that moves us on. Any other questions on the presentation?
So is there a way to coordinate this with what we've gotten from ESP? I'm assuming some of it's going to overlap.
Well, ESP specifically was for lighting evaluations, so.
I thought they did some other stuff and not just lighting. Did they just do that?
Higher than the other stuff, but yeah.
They just did lighting.
For that particular project, that's all we had done. Next, number six, disposal of old property.
I need the board's approval to dispose of the old stove and range at Lincoln Junior Senior High School. Fifty percent of it wasn't functioning, the oven didn't work, and when you did turn it on, it was very gassy. I'm assuming it's original to the building, so a new one will be installed Wednesday. And I can add it to the list that needs to go to Purple Wave and someday we'll have quite a large entry into Purple Wave when we get around to actually getting everything listed.
So at this time, we take a motion just to dispose of that?
Thanks, Alan.
Motion by Jessica, seconded by Jason, that USD 298 Board of Education authorized the disposal of the stove that has been replaced at Lincoln Junior Senior High School. Any other discussion? All in favor? Okay, credit card policy.
I brought this to you last time, last month, and I did find out that E receipts are okay through this system with Arvis. They've been in contact with us about training and with Brenda and I, and so I just, if there's questions about this policy that you have after reviewing it, or if we can accept it so that when we do implement this, we have something in place that's solid.
This is essentially the same policy as what we brought last month?
Yes.
I just wanted, if you didn't bring the copy, you had a freshman in case there was a question and just rang a bell. You wanted to bring something up? And just so you know, I didn't make this up, this is an Arvis recommended purchasing card policy. And they kind of gave us the template and we modified it to fit our parameters.
I remember that we approved the credit card policy. I'll second.
Okay, credit card policy. Motion by Jessica, seconded by Bree, that USD 298 Board of Education approve the credit card policy for USD 298 as presented in this packet. All in favor? Opposed? Okay, a rest of remodel at Lincoln Junior Senior High School. Do you know that's been on our out there list?
Well, I would just, I would point you to the clerk's report on cash summary report. Part of our goal, part of my goal, is to get us to a position where little by little we can reinvest back into our district and facilities and maintenance and deferred maintenance, it's been deferred for too long. And we toured those restrooms by the commons, everybody knows how bad they are, but I'd like to put that out to bid. The last bid we got was a year ago and it was $47,000 for both bathrooms. It's probably $57,000 or more, but I need to get it scheduled for this summer so that it can be completely gutted and completely redone. If you look at capital outlay on that cash summary report, we're currently sitting at $571,970. We will get another capital outlay distribution from the county before the end of the school year. My goal is to maintain a safety net of $500,000 in capital outlay. But anything above that, that we can reinvest into what we need to be taking care of, I'd like to start that process of reinvestment. So I have no idea what those bids will come in at, but if I don't get it out to bid and get it scheduled so that they can have supply chain issues resolved, I don't know that they can get it done this summer if we don't get it out quickly.
Are we talking about just the ones there at the commons or the ones down the hallway by the library as well?
Just the ones at the common. That would be all I think we could swing this year. And the ones down by the library just don't have the wear and tear and the drywall rot. They're not ideal, you know, they're not pleasant by any means, but they're not in a state of, in such a state of disrepair.
And now it's visible to the public either.
And understand, when we talk remodel, we're talking tiled walls, no more holes in the sheet rock, no more throwing another kid through the two studs that happened, you know, crushing the sheet rock. We're talking making it kind of, I don't want to say upscale, but very durable, tiled probably to the ceiling. And a new epoxy floor and all new. Reconfigure the current, on the boys' side, current layout and make it more compliant and easier. Just basically empty the room and start all over.
Can I ask, so is this on the budget?
Motion by Gina, seconded by Jason, that USD 298 Board of Education approved the letting of bids for a complete remodel of the restrooms located next to the commons area at Lincoln Junior Senior High School. Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Six oh. Okay. Next, payment charges for food service.
So you know, we went to a central kitchen and it's working well. Our vehicle has quite a bit of wear and tear on it. It's not at the end of its life, but we don't have anything that can back it up if it goes down. And what typically happens is Jenny will lift those hot carts in the back of her Suburban as the alternative. So what I would like to do, as food service builds throughout the year, there's a certain amount that we should leave in there that the state allows, but excess can be reinvested in things like that stove and things like that. So I would like to look and see what a newer cargo minivan or half-ton van, that would have to have some sort of lift. Just look at some options, I didn't want you to be shocked if I came and said, hey, I found three different options for a vehicle, but we could keep the one that we currently have as kind of our standby backup.
The one we currently have has a little bit of a correct?
It has a ramp that just folds out and then folds up.
It's currently not quite big enough for all the carts to take some things in the morning and leave, and then they leave some things in the evening to bring back because it just doesn't.
It's a handicap van, it's not a cargo van. So when you open the sliding door with the ramp down, it's really just a square where you can, could have bolted down, a wheelchair, but there's a backseat and it's configured on with, it's not a full van all the way back.
That's why I said we would go for a flat four. But we had to get started somewhere.
Had to get started, it was kind of an experiment, but I think it's worked out well. And it's streamlined our production facilities and I would call it a success. And I think moving forward, we're going to stay with it.
It has helped me to value well. Now these vans, is there, there's no seats in them?
No, I would like to buy.
Is there options of putting seats in them just in case you needed it for fun else or?
No, they wouldn't let you, they don't let you retrofit into a passenger vehicle for schools. It would strictly be a cargo van, flat all the way, we put a rubber floor or something in it. It would have nothing on the sides, so you could use like trucker expansion rods to hold the carts in place.
You could possibly haul football equipment if we had to put a truck somewhere down.
No passengers.
Just no passengers. Two seats up front, that would be it. That would be a nice equipment vehicle, what do you think about that? We were trying to get away from a bus that had that stuff, we talked about other ways to transport football.
That's a team event, we have to ask the ramp in case we need a wheelchair accessible.
Well, that and just if something happened, like I said, if the one we have now goes down, we're pretty much in a bad place. And I don't want, I don't want the employees that are going to elementary school to have that lifting and, you know, that.
Twice a day if it goes down, it is, we just have to wait for it to walk back.
And I'm not asking to purchase, I'm asking to investigate so you don't get surprised if that ends in there.
That's not saying we looked at all, we don't make you.
Thirteens.
Running out of good rental vehicles. But I think it's good for.
You take a motion? Yeah, we take a motion to let bids, kind of like we did on the restroom remodel. That's a move. Okay.
I'll second it.
Motion by Jason, seconded by Gina, that USD 298 Board of Education approved the superintendent letting bids for the purchase of a district food bank. Any other discussion? All in favor? Six oh. Okay. HVAC bids for Lincoln Junior Senior High, you can come out if you also.
So at your station there, the two companies bid on the units on very specific, very specific specifications. I guess that's a funny way to say it. They had a very well-defined spec sheet to bid apples to apples. I wanted you to have a copy of both of the bids that were brought, so the board was fully informed of the process and what we could receive from the contractors. As you can see, one is significantly lower than the other, and I would ask that we accept that bid. What I have pre-approved right now from S R three is $50,000 for more HVAC units at the high school. You know, we bought three out of S R two. We used S R two and S R three combined for the gym, the two 15-ton units by the metal shop to heat and air condition the gym, and this is just an ongoing continuation of that project. I think we can get six, $50,000, this price is 6.25 units. So I would probably recommend, and it'll be within my spending authority, to go ahead and get seven units. And then we will have phased in some new ones before I got here, some trains from Calabrese. And then we have three in the last couple of years, and then we can bring seven in now. And there's a total of 24 up there, so we're still not quite a 50% replacement. And S R is just about done, so that will have to be part of a strategic plan of how many units are we buying a year? And if it's five, then we have several more years before we can get those original units cycled out. Right now, we have one that's completely down and can't be repaired. They found one, one unit in the entire country in Texas, and we got it and we got it shipped here. But that's just the lead time on these. When we originally put these specs out, the lead time was 30 weeks. So we don't even know if we can get it installed by the time school starts. So the sooner we approve, the sooner they can place the order, and maybe something will happen and we can get them in it more timely fashion.
Do you want in there that we're gonna, that we're after seven? This is the order that we're going through, seven or eight.
Probably so, just because the original six are going to be way beyond. Even though it's S R money, it's not budget money, but technically needs board approval. So seven units.
That's a move. Okay.
One second.
Okay. Are we doing the performance bond as one attaching to the? Two second, I'm Bree. Okay, motion by David, seconded by Bree, that USD 298 Board of Education accept the low bid from Street Plumbing, Heating and Electrical for HVAC replacement at the Lincoln Junior Senior High School in the amount of $7,998 per unit with an additional $160 to unit price for performance bond for a total of $8,158, and that we look forward to purchase seven units at that price. Any other discussion?
Does this include getting them up there and everything?
It will get complete installed. It includes hooking it to the EPM program, it includes the boot that has to be manufactured, the retrofit, includes the crane, gas hookup, electric hookup, everything.
I second.
Yes. Yeah, you can almost get it to for one. Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Okay, sound equipment for recording.
I had just gotten some feedback, I just wanted to share with the board, it's not necessarily an action item, but there was some feedback that when we record programs, that they're very poor quality, both in sound and video. I don't know that it's, I don't know how widespread that is as far as not being able to hear, but I know when we were recording at the grade school, we'd just stick an iPad on a stand and try to pick up the sound and the video. I struggle with the expense it would take to find some recording equipment, but I didn't know if you had heard anything, if it was a discussion that the board wanted to have, or if you wanted me to even look into it, but.
So this would be like grade school programs or maybe music program at the high school or?
A lot of our stuff's uploaded to YouTube, and if we just upload the iPad, and I don't think it would be too much more than even a higher grade camera that was just used. I know when they do dance and stuff, and maybe we could reach out to Deana or Sarah and see whether they would record our events for us with what they're currently doing. I don't know if that would just give us some better, because the quality of those is DVD quality on a TV that you can see, which I thought was better than when you pull up our YouTube. It's, you kind of can't pick out your kid unless you sort of know where they are.
And it's just one big shot of the stage from the bleachers, so it's just, there's a bunch of people up there.
And I could be wrong, but I think the recording started when, during COVID. Is that when that started?
Yes, yes.
Because before it was never recorded.
Yes, it wasn't, and I think, I think it's a good thing because there are people that are outside. It has opened some doors for people to see things they can't count.
Also, we do have the bridge one on the high school.
I suppose it would be well to do, I don't know why.
Well, there are some limitations at the high school, particularly with things that you can't record, like play copyrighted material and things like that, but you know, most of our, it's mainly an elementary thing for their programs because they're so cheap and cute.
So, and if anybody had any thoughts, what's your?
As far as the sound, I think a lot of that has to do with the audience too, you know, how much background noise there is. Yes. When you hear things turn off, so.
I mean, we could go as crazy as to getting a bank of microphones in front of the stage, feeding into some sort of a system, it's out of my realm. We've talked about it even here, Brenda and I, about how do we get these mics hardwired right into a recording device so it's not just recording from speakers and what it can pick up? And people have talked about even with these microphones, sometimes this is hard to hear here because we're not hardwiring any of our sound, we're just trying to pick it up.
And maybe it's something we use here too, because use an iPad.
Do you think there's got to be some sort of system that connects to an iPad?
Well, it was an additional expense when we looked into this, yeah, and I don't think we thought it was.
It was like a whole nother box that went back there.
It would have been mounted back here and then it would have went into the, yeah.
And that's the problem with the schools, none of these be mobile.
Right. We talked about getting one on the court.
Is there something similar to what used to be a cam recorder or that's a little higher tech than that or not necessarily?
I'm sure, yeah, I'm sure there's some available, but I'm not sure how much.
I know the commercials say if you get an iPhone 14, you can make Hollywood quality movies, so there's that.
We thought it was an option.
Something to dig into?
I'd say it's worth looking into, I know that we have a lot of family members outside of Lincoln who can't come to programs, who do enjoy watching.
If you can make your grandkids out, it could have value.
It might be, yeah.
If it downloads to YouTube, it's something that's there in ten years, if somebody wants to go back and say, hey, that was your grade school program.
And if it's manned instead of just sitting there, maybe it could do a zoom in and pan and zoom in on solos and different things like that.
Kind of related to this subject, is there any way we could, in the old days, not too many years ago, students did this?
I was in that class.
Can that be something that can we delegate to student? Or a program in the school that would care about?
We'd have to get with the staff and see if any class mirrored that sort of a thing.
Because we had our own TV channel and we would have to go around and interview people and, yeah.
I'd say that free TV. That was quite a deal when we had that.
But they did have mobile stuff they could take around and record, and that was part of the class. And then they had to edit it and put it together and, and then it got loaded.
I was just thinking somebody that can run the camera, it's notorious.
We can look into games. I'll reach out to, say it's the dance company that has some high-tech.
Yeah.
High-res stuff. Yeah, Sarah Heller or Deana, so I think they've done it off and on.
I think we should get out to Annie, she'll go with us.
Okay. Class's policy clarification.
We changed the policy so our instructors could get 100% of the compensation for dual credit courses. However, it slipped through the cracks, certain verbiage that we needed in the policy. What our current policy says is 50% less taxes. Well, the motion that was made was 100%, period, which would leave us kind of on the hook for the tax liability of that. So I'd like to clarify that any concurrent teaching staff member could keep 100% of the school's compensation less taxes.
Last one. Okay. Motion by Jason, seconded by David, that USD 298 Board of Education clarify that staff teaching concurrent classes will receive the total amount from the college less taxes. Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Okay. Principal report.
Just FYI, Mrs. Lynn went down to the city meeting because when we burst our pipe down at the fieldhouse, we had a $1,200 water bill for that breakage, and she is going to be down, or she's down there right now, having a conversation about potentially waiving all or a portion of that so that we're not using monies that should be directed toward kids for a semi-catastrophic event. So she's going to request that they review that bill and see if they'll work with us on something. The total bill with electricity was like over $1,500 just for the fieldhouse. So it was worth an ask to see if they would not take taxpayer money intended for education for the water bill.
Well, that's something that's out of our control potentially.
And really, our argument is these are tax dollars, it's not residents that had an issue or whatever else. So I'm hoping they don't say that it sets a precedent that you can just go and get something out, we're just a specially funded entity, and it's not really the intention.
Further on the subject, so we can talk about remodeling, or fixing up, remodeling or fixing up of the?
Fieldhouse.
Yeah.
It's included in the evaluation of this book. It's a minimal review of the fieldhouse as far as the locker rooms and everything else. Yeah. What they leave out, what they leave out is funny things like in the shower, there's six showerheads and there's one bowl valve, so you turn on all six showers to just get one shower going. It's very, just pieced together and falling apart.
But I was wondering, is there a way we can somehow know what the temperature of that building is?
The only way we could do that is we could get some sort of internet connection there so EPM could monitor it. I did talk to them quite a bit about what could we do to know? And they had everything from, you could put a strobe light on a pole that came out of the roof, and when there was a power outage, a battery backup would shoot a strobe like the back of the, like the top of a bus. You could put a siren or an alarm system on it that would beep and possibly a neighbor would see it. I don't know how long that thing ran until we got a phone call. Somebody drove by and said, hey, you've got a lake in the practice field. And when I got there and opened the back door, there was, well, before I opened the door, the water was coming out of the door jamb about four to six inches up. So when I opened the door, it was like opened the floodgates and everything came washing out. And we just didn't have any idea that the furnace quit working. It's not a new furnace by any means, which I don't want to shock you with that information, but I don't know other options besides that. Without internet connectivity, we just simply can't connect to any of the systems that we currently have. When it's gotten very cold the last couple of times, I drive by there just every morning just to check and see if there's any water flowing out. We pushed probably two inches of water out of the locker room, Roger and I, with squeegees and brooms. We just opened the doors and started pushing water out, I mean, it was just everywhere. We didn't lose equipment though, because they had racks now for the pads. And before I got here, there was an event where they lost a lot of football equipment, a lot of mold. We got a couple of good things going. One, it was cold as heck and mold isn't an issue without, you know, humidity and heat. But two, because of that event, they had purchased racks at some point, so there was minimal amount of equipment on the floor. I tried to look into getting a claim for what was done and the repairs, but we have a $10,000 deductible for flood. We didn't have that kind of damage, so we just absorbed it.
We will have internet at our football stadium for our games?
Well, it's a weird.
It's at Met or, there's?
It shoots over to the tech building, which then is connected to the rest of everything else. But it's mainly for that camera thing.
I was going to say, whether it could be bounced, might be bounced. Right, because the cost of whether the strobe light on top is cheaper or whether the?
There's somebody with lettuce snobs going off.
I'm sure somebody.
And we had a long conversation even today about controls and heating and cooling controls with Craig, and different options and, you know, what's best for, because we have no controls at the elementary school. You know, if a, we have these $750 thermostats and nobody knows how to operate them. Nobody knows how to program them, not even the people that installed them. Nobody can find a book on how to operate them. And so as far as I know, there's a window of degrees that a teacher can move it up and down, but it's on all weekend, it's on all spring break, it's on all Christmas. it's on all Christmas break. Because we don't have the ability, when E P M was pulled out of there, we don't have the ability to have total control over the system.
And that's not very old.
They were installed right before I started, the summer of nineteen.
Right when we were on, on school board.
Yeah. I, I think if we dig into this, this thing or anything, Craig said that, well, you had a quote for putting E P M back in. He thought that it could be done a quarter less than that. So if, if it's a priority or somewhere we want to go, I think that there are options there that we can look into. Sounds like you have to get all the right people to do that. So if they mess with the thermostats amount of the units, because there's some that'll go in. Units themselves and some that go in and work the thermostats.
So if Nikki comes back, she can share anything if she has something.
Highlights, highlights. Superintendent report, a little bit back for tonight. Uh, executive session for personnel, I suppose we can go to that now. If it comes back, please come over here. Very, very. Yeah. I'll show you for some of them. Okay. That'll work. Thirty minutes. Thirty? Just short? Okay. Yeah. We'll go to thirty minutes, which should be seven forty-five, eight fifteen. Five seconds.
One second.
Motion by Jason, seconded by Gina, that USD 298 Board of Education go into executive session at seven forty-five P M for thirty minutes with the superintendent for the purpose of discussing personnel matters for non-elective personnel and that the board return to open meeting at eight fifteen P M in this room. The executive session is required to protect the privacy interests of identifiable individuals. All in favor? Opposed?